Wonderful. Welcome, everybody, to this special meeting of the Hubble County Board of Supervisors. Today is Wednesday, May 13th, and we will just remind those who are viewing this meeting that is pursuant to executive order in 29-20. This is a virtual meeting over soon, and we will continue, conduct the meeting with your participation if you wish. After we announce an agenda item, you will call the numbers on the screen, and you can then press star nine to get in the queue to speak, and at the appropriate time, the clerk of the board will, will unmute your phone. So, thank you, everybody. With that, I will open the meeting and invite you to join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Undivisible.
Invisible.
Liberty, justice for all.
And justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So, at this point, we will open the meeting. We only have one agenda item today, and it's a report from the Department of Public Health. But we have Dr. Frankovich, our health officer. I believe we also have the sheriff on board to talk about the latest developments with regard to our moving into phase two. So I'll pass it to you now, Dr. Frankovich. Welcome. We'll get you unmuted in a second there.
Okay, I got you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
So, I appreciate our ability to call a special meeting so that we can talk about our application to the state, essentially our, it's called our attestation for a variance in stage two. So, the, the idea of this put forth through the state is that while they initiated a soft opening of phase two or stage two in our roadmap to pandemic recovery, that we can apply to have some local control over how quickly we move through this stage. And so, or slowly, basically, that we can control that rather than doing that in alignment with all other counties of the state. In order to be able to do this, we had to create a, a report addressing, basically, our ability to respond to infection in our community. And that report is enclosed in your packet and walks through multiple components, including ability to protect stage one workers, essential business workers, our testing capacity onboard, our containment capacity, which speaks to our communicable disease contact investigation and tracing procedures, our ability to house some vulnerable populations, and specifically, they wanted information about our homeless populations who have possible or definite infection with COVID. Hospital capacity in the event of a surge in cases. Discussion again about some of our vulnerable populations who are residing in congregate settings, like skilled nursing facilities. And then, a, a general timeline of how we would move forward, and the triggers, how will we know that we need to slow down? How will we know that the conditions are right on the ground to open? And so, that is a big piece of the report that we put in place here to look at what kinds of things do we have in place to monitor the situation on the ground, and what kind of indicators will we use to help guide us going forward? And so, that report actually is, is complete, and what's required in addition to the report itself is a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors, as well as letters of support from our hospital partners. And so, those are included, the draft of the supervisor letter and the completed letters from our hospital partners are included as well. One thing I do want to point out is that we did prepare this report over the weekend, and, you know, finalized it yesterday. Obviously, things are changing on the ground here. We have enjoyed a relatively long period with zero or one case being announced. We, over the last, if we look at the, I guess, the 12th and back, 14 days, which is what the state has asked us to do. At the time, we did the report, we had eight confirmed cases in that two-week period. By our population size, we're allowed to have up to 13.5 cases in that period in order to meet the requirement for being granted the variance. Obviously, we've had some increase in cases over the weekend. We've reported, at this time, 64 cases, which brings us to 11 per thousand. So closer to that margin. And we are clearly, in light of the cases at the assisted care facility, you know, we're monitoring all of it very closely. And so, we, we want, we have provided information to this, you know, to the state about current situation on the ground here, and the fact that while we still meet criteria for being able to open, even if that is approved, we'll need to look at what's happening when that approval occurs about what we'll need to do moving forward. Are we ready to open? If we are ready to open, do we need to be doing it a little more slowly than we might have planned a week or two ago? But those questions will be answered once we actually do have that approval in place. And I don't know if the board would like me to walk through any of those specific pieces of the plan, or just questions?
Um, and maybe if you have thoughts on how you, you might want to do that, I would, I would ask you to do that, Dr. Frankovich. Otherwise, I would invite the sheriff to give us an outline as well. But if you have some more to add, I'd say let's do it, and then we can go for questions.
Okay. Well, again, I think the report has, has been made available to all. The protection of our stage one essential workforce, we talk a lot in there about the, our joint information center, all of the information that's been available to everyone from our healthcare providers and first responders to guidances that are available for our businesses and other members of our community. So, we highlight a lot of that information, as well as the new platform that we have for businesses to apply for their ability to open. And so, I think, you know, we pretty clearly outline our capacity in that regard. Our testing capacity has, we certainly, we have tested below the, there are two indicators here, really. One is the volume of testing we've been doing on a ba, daily basis, and the other is what is our actual capacity to test. So, when we looked at this, we actually fall a little bit lower than the state are on what we've been doing on a daily basis. And I think there are a couple of reasons for that. One is that we have had relatively quiet in terms of respiratory and other types of symptoms, you know, febrile illnesses in the community. So, I think there have been fewer people tested, coming into providers' offices and being tested for that reason. It's been a little quieter than normal. But also, our Optum site has, although we've been doing beautifully with it, we still have some capacity there. It's a brand-new system for our community. So, we want to make sure that that is jam-packed full every day. So, what I have outlined for the state, as they asked, is what is our actual capacity for testing? How many could we do, or can we do, when, when that's needed? And we clearly vastly exceed what's required in that regard for testing. We also included there a list of all of the healthcare settings that are submitting specimens to commercial labs, because the commercial labs are another source of testing for us. Our containment capacity, I've spoken to the board about this before. We've moved from our baseline of three people working those cases to now a team that of 30 individuals, nurses and contact tracers. And we actually aim for about, well, nearly doubling that, essentially, at about 59 individuals, and are building capacity in that regard. But we clearly meet the state indicator at our current capacity and our team. The temporary housing piece of this, again, predominantly goes to our homeless population. I think DHHS, in working with community partners, has done a beautiful job of creating the housing capacity. Specifically, we need to be able to house 15% of our estimated homeless population at one time, if we needed to, because of an outbreak in that community. And we do actually have enough housing to do that by the contracts that we have in place. Our hospital capacity, again, this is an issue we've talked about extensively in these meetings and with the community. We feel our hospitals, particularly with the addition of the alternate care sites that we've established, are able to meet this need at the moment for a 35% increase in surge, which is the requirement from the state. The, the EOC, in their hard work at setting up the alternate care site that we have in Eureka, is just phenomenal. And I think walking through looks beautiful in that site, and will function well if we ever need it, and I think we all hope that we will not. And then, the measures about protecting our hospital workforce and adequate PPE, we have met. Our vulnerable populations, again, go to our skilled nursing facilities. The measure for the state on this is that the skilled nursing facilities have at least 14-day supply of PPE or personal protective equipment. They all do. They all have commercial sources for that equipment, as well as our county backup for their equipment if there was an increased need. We've gone beyond that, and we're working with our assisted living facilities as well, and that's through a team from our EOC, doing direct outreach to these facilities to help ensure they have all the guidances they need, and that they've assessed their personal protective needs, and that we are able to help them get anything they need onboard. So, for, for that criteria. Our timeline for opening, we basically have on our timeline that our hospitals have begun to offer more elective or chronic disease management capacity for visits, outpatient and hospitals, because those are important health features, and we want our community to be able to take this opportunity to not defer some of things like important cancer screenings and such that are needed for people's overall health. So, that is in place. Our low-risk workplaces that were able to operate by curbside pickup or delivery, those were able to be opened on May 9th with the soft reopening, and some additional businesses were added by the governor as well. What we put on here was that our retail, including foot, customer foot traffic and some of other additional services, like tanning facilities, landscape, that, as per the governor's order, or inclusion in stage two. We plan that those would be sort of our, our first step, and with, we'd be able to move forward with that when we have the approval of this plan, and we have been able to review the business plans for these entities and provide feedback. The final piece of that is us being ready on the ground, as I mentioned. If we're going to be seeing an increase in cases right now, that's of concern, we may need to go slower on this piece than we would have planned. But we'll see what that looks like at the time we have approval. And then, the next group of businesses are the ones, again, the governor has mentioned that can be done and expanded stage two, with office-based businesses, dining, destination retail, outdoor museum, open gallery spaces. Those will be opened as determined by, again, the conditions on the ground, as I, as the health officer have to evaluate in conjunction with our partners. And finally, we noted on the timeline that we really want to get childcare up and available beyond essential service worker children. And so, we will be looking at getting some of that up and running in May and June, and including looking at things like entities that have run day camps for kids, that they feel they can structure as childcare by those same numbers of groups and safety practices, and trying to include those as well, because I think that would be great for our families in the county. And then, the final thing is looking at the triggers for adjusting modifications, and how do we know that we are having problems, or that we may need to slow down? And so, we've listed here the epidemiologic factors that we would look at, our healthcare impact, and we have metrics to be able to follow that in real time, and our ability to do public health response in terms of contact investigation. So, those pieces, we feel are going to be our safety measures, to be able to tell us whether we can move forward, or we need to pause for a bit. And that's what we'll be evaluating over these next couple of days, to see where we are as well, and how that looks for us opening. And then, finally, in this, we put in just some summary statements about the personal protective equipment that is on hand, or has come through our MOAC, through our county to distribute in our community, our transport medium and swabs that are available on hand. And I actually just got news today from the testing task force that we're going to be getting a whole bunch more of those. There's a shipment coming our way. And then, just overall, our, our containment plan includes us working with our regional partners and having awareness about counties surrounding us, so that we know how they're doing. And one thing we did point out in here is that we're working pretty closely with Del Norte County to look at possibly expanding some testing, either through Optum or another such entity, to have a regional approach, and perhaps include Trinity in that as well, so that we can improve access for our partner counties nearby. And that, that basically helps all of us. So, that's an important piece. And our participation on the regional health officer's call, it's got the acronym RANJO for the Rural Association of Northern California Health Officers, that's a group that Dr. Ennis and I meet with weekly, and talk about what's going on in our counties in our region as well, to do some communication and planning. So, I think those pieces all together actually put us in good shape on the plan that was created. And I'd like to thank, there are many people who contributed to doing this, putting this plan together, both within public health, as well as the EOC, and I appreciate all those efforts. I think it's a really good report. So, my biggest takeaway with this, again, is that the numbers on here reflect, you know, that previous week, I want the public and the board to be aware that we're monitoring the new cases that we've had come in, and that those will be an important factor going forward, regardless of the approval status of this, in terms of assessing our readiness. So, we're hoping for a little lull right now in cases, and give us a moment to sort of look at where we are. And I think that's all on my end. I'm sure the sheriff has things to add as well.
Thanks. Let's go with a, a rundown from the sheriff, and then we'll go to questions from the board. Welcome, Sheriff Hansel.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair. A lot of hard work has gone in the last couple of days, over the weekend, and I appreciate the, the attestation. It's very, very detailed. When you look over, this will be, this will be published, obviously, and so, everyone, you know, is published on the, the county website right now under this agenda, but this will be published for everyone to see. So, to see all the extensive work that has gone into this, thank Dr. Frankovich, Public Health, and looking at all those little aspects that, that we have to kind of check off our list in order to, to expand to this, this phase two. So, very thoughtful, and I think very, very understandable when, when you look at this. And so, appreciate Public Health, EOC, the JIC, all those working, moving parts, as well as the partnerships we've had with the cities and, and our county. So, things are going well. Things that we're looking forward to right now is, as we're looking at expanding into this phase two, was certifications of, of businesses. We are launching today an online tool that'll assist businesses with meeting all the reopening requirements that the state has put out. Couple of days ago, they put out 17 different essential structures that, that people can go into retail sector or sectors, as far as different sectors for employment, and, and so, also, they've added three more. So, there's 20 now, sectors that people can actually look at and, 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 and start planning for those needed control measures to be put into place, to become compliant with, with worksite plans that the state is requiring for businesses to stay open or to reopen. So, we are launching that online tool that'll basically walk people through the, the worksite specific plans in one of those specific sectors. As we're waiting for the state to approve our attestation, we're going to have essential businesses that are currently open go through this process and be certified. We, retail businesses, like is detailed in this report, will be the next to be evaluated when we are, we are at the point where our public health officer says that we are good to go with opening those retail establishments to, to foot traffic. Then, we will push out those certifications to those businesses that have applied, and that we've approved their online worksite specific plan. There's, you know, four essential areas that they're going to have to address. One is training. The other is their individual control measures and screening measures, cleaning and disinfective protocols, as well as physical distancing guidelines. Once they put in, essentially, walking through that process, and they're able to put their specific plan for those areas, we approve. And we have essentially about 20 to 30 people that are ready to approve these applications. And so, we, we hope for a very, very quick turnaround, and so, that for those essential businesses that are currently open, and then, once those expanded businesses can open up, they, they will get those certifications here, you know, within, hopefully, hours, as opposed to days. But, but like Dr. Frankovich said, this is going to be a slow process based upon our current risk factors right now that we are facing. But, but we do have plans on opening up, and I'm happy that we're in the, we're in the position here in a county to open into the expanded phase two. And so, unlike LA County, where they're looking at locking down for the next three months, we do have that variance here on the North Coast to, to relax some restrictions, but we're basically wanting to, you know, make it in small bites at this time.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. I know that there, we, I'm sure that my colleagues as well have, I've received a lot of calls from people concerned about what's happening at Alder Bay, are people being quarantined, et cetera, et cetera. So, I know that my colleagues will probably have questions like that. And also, maybe before we end this, like get a little bit, I don't know if we want a demonstration, but I'd really like people to understand just how easy it is to, to fill out that form that you'll be putting on, online pretty quickly. But I'll open it up, if any of the board supervisor best.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, all good information. I was actually amazed at how detailed that plan was. So, a lot of hard work went into that. Um, this question is for the sheriff. I think we've talked about the certification and the ability for people to move forward. And what I'm hearing you say now is like the retail, we don't want them to apply earlier, because I know some people would just like to kind of get their paperwork in. So, is there some way that they can apply, but then be put in some kind of holding pattern until you're ready to okay the retail establishments? I mean, I just, I want to take advantage of the people are really wanting to do, you know.
Because that, the idea here is, is, is for someone to actually look at these plans online, because the governor pushed out these sector plans and guidance for each sector. So, look at that and start planning, because some people are going to have to actually put in control measures and put in barriers, and have to modify their businesses in order to become compliant with these plans, and then also come up with training protocol. So, we want people to actually go through those, that process. Now, if you're ready to go, and you believe that you can submit your plan, you have all those, those topics covered, as outlined in the, in the state order, please apply now, no matter what sector you're in. If the sector is on our website to apply for, apply for it. And then, once we give you the approval, you know, the restaurants are going to be on there in, in a day or two, but it may be a little bit while, you know, a couple days more, all depends on the factors of when restaurants do open up. But apply for it now, and that's when the certification is available, and, and the business is allowed to open up, then you'd be the first aligned to get that certification, you know, from the county, delivered to your specific business. But we're urging retail, as soon as this thing launches this afternoon, please apply, go online, and, and give us details in your site specifics plan, and as soon as CDPH and our public health officer allow retail businesses to open, we will, we will send your certification out there.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah. I'd like to, on the testing capacity on page six, we've got it broke down, how much Optum and how much the private labs. Is there any chance we can start putting that out there on our daily thing? I know we can't do that. I know other counties do that, and I know I've asked this considerably. But people would like to, like to have that understanding without having to do all the math, because we put the totals out there. So, obviously, we're keeping track of it. So, could we think about that at least?
Your, your monitor.
Um, yeah, Supervisor Bone, it's, we actually, what our goal is, as you can see there, we put an estimated value for the commercial non-optimum labs, the point-of-care machines, and it's because it's very hard for us to get a good number there on a daily basis. So, that's, that's gotten increasingly difficult for us to report. What has gotten easier for us to report just in the last week is the optimal numbers. And so, that's what we'd actually like to start providing on the website, is the daily Optum numbers. And it will, I think that's a much better, since they're a bulk of our non-public health lab, labs, I think that'll give the community a better idea of how much testing has happened. So, that, that's our intent, for sure. So, what we would like to have on that report is the Optum servesite testing and the public health laboratory testing, as representing the bulk of what's going on in our community.
All right. That, that'd be great. And I guess you could even put the commercial on there if you have a pretty good idea with the disclaimer. This is as good as we can get with our, you know, I mean, because so much of this, yeah. Well, so much, even our modeling's a, a, a best guess, so, but that.
Right. Yeah. The problem we find with the commercials, it gets increasingly unreliable, because as different private offices are putting a point-of-care machine in to get an accurate total that isn't just pulled out of thin air, is just tough. And again, I think the numbers right now are relatively small, but if we figure out a good way to capture that, I'll be happy to put it on there.
So, are, and are we saying that, that the Optum site is not running to maximum right now? I know they're, they're getting one in Mendocino, and I think all the other 80 are up and running, so, are pretty close. So, is it not up to maximum? Do, do we need to tell people, hey, if you want to get tested, you can? Because I, I'm, I'm, they're not, I'm getting calls every day, is, okay, can I go in and get tested? I said, just go online. I don't think there's a, and are we, are we gonna, are we gonna be at that point where we've got people that just don't know and happen to be out that way? Is there going to be a wait-in-line place that there's nobody, where nobody's there, and they can, I mean, kind of like getting your haircut? You don't have an appointment, but if somebody cancels or doesn't make it, they can jump in line?
Well, what I would suggest, because we don't want people to end up sort of crowded there at all, is that if people, most of us, you know, are carrying a phone with us, you know, there's a number you can call as well as online, so it's easy just at that time to go. I would tell you, the numbers we have in here, Supervisor Bone, are that, I think that was the second week we were in operation. So, we're still at like 121, 116, 109, but we can take 132. And so, so we do want to get more people in. My understanding, at the beginning of this week on Monday, I think we were looking, actually over the weekend, to get people in for this coming week, and we were pretty booked solid through till Thursday. So, occasionally, there are going to be gaps, because people don't show up, and we're trying to minimize that. But yes, what I would tell people is, please, go online or call if you don't have internet access, and schedule an appointment.
Okay. And then, with their, with your RANJO group, I know probably having Chasten, Tama, people that already have their plan approved, that was probably helpful, seeing what their plan looked like. It was for me, so.
Yeah. Well, we, yeah, we've been talking about it for, for a bit here, and so, I think some people varied in what they submitted on to the state as well. But yeah, I think it's all good. I think the information sharing is helpful.
And then, on page nine, on the tracking, the containment capability and stuff, are we, are we still using DA investigators too? I didn't see them listed, so I didn't know if we were using them or not.
Um, I think we put in here, somewhere I commented on some of the span of people we've used, but we still have investigators that are trained and able to function. We haven't needed to use them right now, we're using them as needed. So, they participate in the task, but they're still part of the team.
So, then also, there's, there's law enforcement detectives and other investigators throughout the county that are also assigned to that investigative unit. So, we've had, we have police departments that have stepped up that also have provided those, those personnel.
Okay. I just, I just think people are asking, I just, you know, I don't want you to bear it all, Billy. Um, all right. And again, if we can get more information out to the folks on what's going on, maybe that phone number, so people are, are phoning it and, and getting lined up. And then, I notice in here, there's a list of everywhere they can get tested, pretty extensive. I mean, all, all, every, basically, medical office around can do testing. I think we somehow, I don't know how we keep telling that to people, but because I keep getting phone calls, where can I go to get tested? And I'm going damn near everywhere.
Well, and I think to that point, the, you know, certainly, for people who have a provider, that access can be simple. I think for people who don't have a provider, that can be more difficult, and that's where the Optum site can be very useful. But we do want to encourage people that if they're very symptomatic, if they're ill, to contact, and they don't have a medical provider, to contact public health, assuming you're not needing emergency care, so that we can talk with you and see if we can help you get some access that might be a quicker turnaround time than. that might be a quicker turnaround time than than even the Optum site.
Sheriff, you put your hand up?
Yeah, I just want to just remind people that humboldtgov.org, our main website, has the banner on there that shows how to register for the COVID test as well as the number. So if you happen to be out and about and, you know, you forget, just then hit our website and you can get the number and and register for a test. And again, asymptomatic people or mild symptoms, symptomatic people can can get that free test out there at Optum at Redwood Acres.
Yeah, what I'd like to say about that is that we have completely revamped the humblegov.org website. And it is extremely, extremely well organized with big buttons. So you just go right there if you want to get the test, if you want to get the list for businesses, whatever else. It's very, very simple. And I think that it's done a tremendous job. Everything you need to know about Humboldt County and how to interact with us is right on that website. And it's and I think it's very good. And then if you have any issues, of course, just call and let people know. But I did have a quick question for Dr. Frankovich. I understand that there's a potential that pharmacies will soon be able to take tests as well. Is that true?
I saw that as well. And I haven't seen if any local pharmacies are planning on offering that, but I have seen that as something that may become available, you know, in the state and nationally. So I'll be interested to see. It's just another access point. And again, I think goes to people who may not have a provider.
Right, and so and they would go again to private companies. But the outfit at Redwood Acres is the one that we're doing right now for asymptomatic and mildly symptomatic people.
Correct.
Yeah. Supervisor Bass, did you have your hand up? I know Supervisor Madrona. Okay, Supervisor Bass and then Supervisor Madrona.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this was just following up on what Supervisor Bone mentioned about Shasta and Tahima. It is great that we have models to follow, but I want to put a cautionary tale out to the public that, you know, I think, shoot, it was even on Good Morning America with Shasta and the people who decided that was a great idea to have a rodeo. And I was talking to one of the supervisors yesterday and, you know, when people do things like that, it really puts everything in jeopardy, I think. And I hope people understand that even though they may want to move faster than things are, if they do it on their own, it could cause a much bigger slowdown, I think. Because I I was I was just really surprised when I talked to the supervisor yesterday and I thought that's going to be a tough position. So just asking people to work with us on this and and not go out to kind of doing things on your own, especially in an early stage like this. That's all.
No, I think that's a fair point. And I do want to mention that we've, you know, in looking at our models or our our plans as well, you know, I think all of us across the state are kind of sharing things that we have, our orders, our model plans and and all of that. And I think, you know, we all learn from each other, so it's helpful. But yes, I think it's a cautionary tale what happened with Shasta.
Thank you, Dr. Frankovich. Supervisor Madrona.
Well, I really appreciate that cautionary note Supervisor Bass. And we don't want to become like the state of Michigan, you know, and take it to that extreme either. So I think it's incumbent upon all of us to try and encourage everybody in our community to really stay the course. That's the message and we have to be doubling down on that. Otherwise, we won't be able to maintain this opening. So appreciate all the hard work on the part of me, Dr. Frankovich and Sheriff Ponce on that and Michelle and all of the staff out there. I do think that this rollout over this last week has been a bit confusing for the community. I know at times I've been confused with the soft opening and then the further opening and delays of posting, which I understand. I mean, just trying to get this thing ready to put out there, no easy task. I'm sitting in my car. I hope that loud rain is effective. Great, great.
Everything's fine. Yeah, it's good.
Positive. We're getting rain. That's good. Anyway, because of that confusion on the rollout, I think there are a number of retail businesses that have that have jumped the gun. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yep.
Yes, I think a number of retail businesses have potentially jumped the gun on opening. And I I see two general categories. There are those that have been diligent in communicating with the county, getting whatever information has been available to them to put together a great plan for their business in terms of all the measures that everybody's been repeatedly talking about needing to be in place. And then there are those that have opened up without those things in place with no plan, no masking, no distancing, et cetera. And so I think over the next week or two, as we, if the numbers don't keep growing in the testing and we're able to move forward with the phase two opening, I just wanted to make you aware that as far as I am concerned, I know in my district, there is a variety of stuff that's happened already, you know, with people. And for me, the ones that are really trying to follow the practices and do the right things, even if they've jumped the gun a little, all right, let's get them in compliance, get them to get the form in and get on board. Shouldn't be a problem. But for those that don't, that that's the message is you're going to get shut down. I mean, you either get on board with these measures and get compliant or it's really not okay because you're endangering everybody in the community. So that's the message I'm putting out and I just I'm sure you're aware of this. Just wanted to to mention it. And thank you for your work getting this done, working all weekend and everything.
I well, thank you. And I just want to say too, to your point, that I think our recent cases that we've seen, you know, are not limited to the assisted care facility. And I think it again just points out that this virus is here. And so there's a just reason for us to be cautious moving forward.
Absolutely. And the more we test, the more we're going to find.
Which was the point, but I know it's difficult.
Yeah, if we don't want our numbers to go up, we should just stop testing, right?
I know. Frankly, a lot of people have sort of adopted that strategy, I think. Unfortunately, it doesn't play out very well.
No, it doesn't. And we're not going to get the support we need and know what's really happening. So again, thank you for all your effort.
Thanks. Yeah, I think people need to know that we're working really hard to have that balance of health and safety as well as growth. So.
I would like to, in response to a query from one of my colleagues, Supervisor Wilson is not with us today. He's on he's at a meeting of the Coastal Commission. So he sends his apologies, but that's why we don't have Supervisors with us. I want to drill down just a little bit more to the care facility, because I've got a lot of questions about it. And I'll just give you a list of those, Doctor. So one of them is, are we getting are we getting all of these higher numbers because of the increased testing? Or are there people sick who are being who are in the in the increased numbers? That's number one. Number two, with the elder facility, how are we treating the people who are contacts of those who have tested positive? Are we quarantining people? And I don't know if you can tell us where they're being quarantined or not. I think those are the two main questions that I'm hearing from people is that they they're a bit concerned about what's happening there, considering what's happened in other communities with senior living areas.
Sure. And so we, I guess, in answer to the first question in terms of the the cases, what do they represent? There's a mix. The the bulk of the cases are are related to the facility in terms of either residents or worker or contacts of a worker. We also do, though, have cases where people have been identified through Optum screening. We have cases where people were symptomatic and were identified. So, you know, the we've had a full spectrum of cases, and I'm not just speaking over the weekend, but in general. And and in our new cases that we have, there is a mix as well. And so I think, again, it doesn't represent simply the facility, although that is, you know, a substantial portion of those new cases. In terms of quarantine and such, you know, the the facility already had very restricted movement in and out of the facility other than essential. And so, you know, the the main issues in terms of isolation and quarantine are people who are symptomatic and those we call isolated. And the people who are exposed but not sick are quarantined. The most significant group, of course, are people who work there. And when you have critical workforce issues, people in that capacity are able to work masked, of course, and carefully. And anyone who is symptomatic is is certainly not able to work. And there's aggressive screening for symptoms at the beginning and end of shifts then and temperatures and all of that as well. The the residents, of course, are being monitored closely. We're doing ongoing testing. The facility has been doing intensive disinfection and cleaning, just as, you know, part of, you know, response measures that we would typically do, using personal protective equipment. And the patients are, of course, being and they have been for quite some time kept from congregating. So people have not been able to, you know, share meals together, visit together in congregated spaces. Those types of procedures were already in place. And so but again, those are all measures that our facilities can take and be prepared to operate. But, you know, when you have a virus circulating in the community, it is possible that somebody will enter a facility who's ill, sometimes without even realizing it. And so I think that it's just, again, a measure of the fact that you put all your prevention measures in place. And then when things happen, you are in a better position to respond. And that's really where we are right now.
Thank you, Doctor. And and then to the sheriff, one other final question. With regard to the applications for certification, there are twenty categories now. And so when people, if if people don't quite know what category they fit in, there's also a description in there pretty much of what that refers to. Is that correct?
Yes, there is. There's descriptions on the on the business types. And and so you can look at those and kind of figure out what the best fit is. There's things that we have put on our websites that, you know, there's no guidance on like salons and barber shops and those kind of things right now. But we expect them to become gyms, you know, those kind of things. But but the state will start rolling out those as well. And so we will, as we get them, we will update our website, update our our compliance guidelines. And so we'll assist them as necessary. And I just want to also remind people that we've partnered up with with a lot of the small business community here to try and create this this process. And the small business community partnering with with a lot of government employees are going to be reviewing these. And and also they're going to be offering tutorials and some other things and and also assistance through our business compliance line and business line as well. There's going to be people that answer questions in real time to assist you guys, you know, during the during the day, of course. But there's going to be plenty of support for people to try and and get through this process as as painless as possible. So but it all depends on which sector you're in. It could take, you know, thirty minutes to 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 go through this whole thing. And the more prepared you are, the easier it's going to be going through it. But there's plenty of prompts. There's a lot of 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 things that we offer guidance through the process.
I think that probably for the smaller businesses, it would be a lot easier than, say, for a much larger business like Target or something like that.
Absolutely. Yep, exactly.
Supervisor Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this is just really in general, because I you guys are getting bombarded by us, I'm sure, with questions on. Is tennis okay? I still don't really have a good answer for that. Can the dental office open, even though dentists were listed in the essential businesses? People have been closed and they're trying to make plans for next week. How can we get, you know, these one-off questions answered? Is it best to send you those questions? I just feel right now that I'm sending you so many that maybe there's a better way for me to do it without taking your precious time. So any suggestions or I'll just keep sending it?
I think actually a good thing is is a good entry point for people in general is the JIC, the Joint Information Center, and doing the four-four-one-five-thousand number. I'm not telling you that that they'll have an answer immediately, because some of this guidance is changing. What's out there and available is changing so quickly. But I can tell you that someone will look for the answer. And if they don't know, they'll they'll reach out, you know, to the sheriff or I or Michelle or whomever to try and get that answer for them. So and there'll be a really rapidly changing landscape here in terms of even the business guidance is available. And as we open businesses for people to be able to tell what's operational.
Well, and I think that was one of the problems. They did go to the JIC and they felt it was really vague and no one offered to get back to them. Yeah, so just figure it out.
When it comes to the public health order does does mention that, you know, dentistry is a part of those essential functions. And, you know, at first we were thinking and stressing, you know, obviously, emergency dental work. But now, you know, even the medical practices, they're moving into elective type surgeries and those kind of elective type appointments. That's the position we're in now. That the the interface comes in with some of those employee unions and those kind of things. And the American Dental Association, those kind of things have offered guidance. And, you know, as far as their practices goes. And so it's whenever they feel comfortable to advising their, you know, dental assistants and dentists and dental hygienists that it's safe to go forward and and practice, you know, that's when it and I did hear that that I think in the next coming weeks, they have they have said that they, if you put these measures in place, they believe that their employees would be protected and so they're giving guidance on that aspect.
Right. And I agree that the, in fact, there was a state call today that included some discussion about dental practices. And Dr. Ennis was on that because I had to be on something else, and so we'll get updated. But yes, the ADA and some other entities have provided guidances. You're right, Supervisor Bass, that it's not been specifically prohibited that they do dental work, but many practices were limiting it to emergency services only. And again, to be able to work, they need to make sure they have the protective equipment and everything in place and their scheduling and how they can operate. So I think that you'll be seeing more practices active as they're able to structure things for their facility.
And they certify them? Do they get certified as well? Do they fill out?
Usually the healthcare entities are not. For instance, with the hospitals, they approached public health and we worked with them collaboratively on when the right moment was. And so, you know, I anticipate those same discussions. But, you know, again, the dentists are myriad of of practices as opposed to one single entity. And so I imagine there'll be ongoing discussions and they'll probably be opening and doing their work again on an individual basis as they're able to get their facility when they feel it's appropriate. So but there's an abundant guidance for them.
CDPH just issued the dental guidance, so it's on the CDPH website today, as of today. That's what they were announcing on the call today. So if anybody in the public can go to the CDPH website and find it too.
Yeah.
And there is a link to this too. And there is a link to the CDPH on the Humboldt County Gov page. One other question before I put it out there, Sheriff. Another category of input that I get a lot from the community is people who are not wearing masks, people stores that are not requiring it. Do you have any words for them? I mean, I know that the way we approached this early on anyway, is that you were taking an educational approach. And so do you have any words for people who are really not listening?
Well, this is this is a part of us moving forward. This is a part of what our expanded phase two is going to look like, is that businesses that are open to the public and have that public interface are going to have to have a facial covering in order to have that public interface. And that's that's important. It's important for people to, number one, get used to being served like that and expecting service like that. And whether you, again, believe it or not, this is a part of a mitigating factor that we can we can do to try and support, you know, what what our function here is, and that's to keep our community safe. And and so this is our mechanism to try and get more businesses open and get more people out from the shelter in place. And and so, you know, ultimately, yes, this is a violation of the public health order. We can cite, you know, persons for this and a fifty to a thousand dollar fine can be assessed. But the goal is education. We want people to to understand that this is maybe not for them, but for the other person. And so we're doing this for the love of our community and and that we care for others. And so we really want to stress that as we move forward.
Supervisor Bone.
Is there any chance we can go ahead and publish a disclaimer for all of these businesses to put? So everybody has the same thing, saying this is a face mask required business. This is by order of the Humboldt County Department of Health. This is the sections. This is the code. We we are under basically something that tells people. So the clerk, I have multiple businesses that have lost employees because there are certain people out there that are not going to wear a mask and they want to let you know they're not going to be wearing a mask because that makes them empowers them for whatever reason it may be. And then we have a clerk at a department store or a hardware store or something else having to defend something that they sure and hell shouldn't have to be defending. They should be weighing the nails and selling it to them. So if we could have something uniform, at least printed out, I would say get them made and delivered all our business, you know, add value added for having a business license or something to that effect. So all of the signs. So all of the signs say the same thing. And I, I, I don't think any of us want any of our folks that are doing retail or any business having to enforce a law. We don't, we don't, we don't pull people over for speeding. We don't, you know, we don't pull people over, we don't do law enforcement. We don't expect citizens to do citizen's arrests ninety-nine percent of the time unless it's a crime against them, which is what classified as. But what I'm saying, so we are at least just like a speed limit sign. So it says the same thing. And so these people have something to refer to. Because you go by four businesses, you see four different definitions of why you have to wear a mask.
No, we do, we do have signs made up. We do have signs that people can download and that they can post on their business. We, we encourage that. We understand as well as the Public Health Orders is saying that, that the business may actually enforce this. You know, we want, we want voluntary compliance. We understand that businesses, you know, are put in some kind of awkward situation and some, you know, confrontations do occur. And so we don't expect them to be the masked police. We want them to inform people. And again, there may be some ADA issues, the reasons why people can't wear masks. So we don't understand that we don't want people pointing fingers and, and, and calling people out. There may be a valid reason why they're not wearing a mask. But, but I just wanted to let people know that, 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 that sign is available and that they can post it on the businesses. We'll make sure of that. And that's, it can be a uniform thing throughout the county.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was my understanding that as soon as people went through this process, they would get something like that for their business, right? I mean, there, there, I've seen them on a number of businesses already. That sign.
Yeah, the original, I think some of our certifications may have had that listed on there originally. But, and again, it's, you know, it's that difficult thing because I understand this is, there, there are going to be people who are. Either not able to, and we completely understand that, and people who are not willing to. And as the Sheriff said, I think, you know, the message we have around that is that, you know, the only way we're going to succeed in this as a community is to really help each other in that way. And so I, I appeal to people's better natures on that point about, you know, sort of responsibility to each other. But I, I agree, I don't want businesses to be in a position of having to be confronted and employees having to be confronted by angry people. And so I, again, agree that this is a, businesses may but do not have to require this. And I want to keep people safe. And I get how intimidating that can be to deal with someone who's very angry and in your face.
Supervisor Madron.
Yes, I apologize, my computer, my computer battery is dying. I'm going to call back in on the phone.
Okay, we'll, we'll stand by on that one. Thank you. So at this point, if there's no further discussion, I'll ask the Turk of the Board, is there any public comment on this item? Ryan?
Yes, Supervisor Dano, there, there is public comment on this item.
Okay, let's open up the line. How many do we have that you're aware of right now, Ryan?
I see two that I'm aware of. And if anyone else would like to comment, they just need to press star nine to raise their hand.
Thank you very much. Star nine is the number and you'll be put into queue. So, welcome. The first caller.
Hi, this is Ian. I am in support of Dr. Frankovich's statement that if this containment element dropped is. Adopted by the boards, that we need to be very careful to refrain from pushing forwards. In spite of the fact that the cases are on the increase right now. So I, I do understand her earlier statement that this is a process-driven document to prepare us to open. But right now, given that we are two cases away from hitting the one over a thousand threshold. It's not the time to push forward if, if we hit that threshold today or tomorrow. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. That's all I wanted to say. I do support staying the course and staying as safe as possible and not accelerating if the numbers don't allow that.
Thank you, Ian. Next caller. You need to, yeah, there you go.
Hello, this is Thomas Mulder. I have multiple things about this. Or I just wanted clarification. I have a couple of questions to the different department heads. I don't expect a direct answer right away. Hopefully at some point in time they can answer. As far as the Sheriff about essential businesses being open right now, they're going to have to do this plan. I'm just curious, as cannabis cultivators, are you going to expect us to have a plan? And if so, hopefully I can get an answer on that so I can share with different people I work with. Frankovich, he, there was a question there, are people, and, and I don't feel that I heard an answer. Are people being forcefully quarantined? Or are they allowed to quarantine themselves at their home? Because I heard about a facility, but I did not hear if people are physically being held in quarantine or not. As a concerned community member, I'd like to know. Also, businesses that are feeling that they need to be open as well, are they going to be physically closed and fined by the Sheriff's Department? Also, a big concern in the second district, as you said, it's a violation of the health order. The trimmigrants that are in front of rays on almost every single day, I've only been to towns a handful of times. But they don't wear masks, they congregate in groups. It would great, it would be great to see the Sheriff's Department go write them up some violations. And lastly, I see this as a special meeting, but I don't see anything about non-agenda items as talked about in a previous meeting before. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and I support this opening up as quickly and safely as possible.
Thank you, Thomas. Any further comment on this agenda item?
Hello, this is Trevor Harp. Am I coming through?
Yes, you are, Kevin.
Okay, very good, thank you. Hey, I wanted to touch on something Supervisor, Supervisor Bass mentioned the Cottonwood Rodeo and what was going on over there. And used it as an example of what not to do and how we can really screw this thing up. And I would have to agree to that somewhat, but I wanted to bring light to that in a little bit different of a twist. And before I get there, I'd like to say that everything that we have done so far in the last couple of months. Has really been monumental, going from the hygiene to the sanitizing facilities, social distancing, face coverings. Your testing, you're working on track and trace and thank you, I understand that was a lot of work to get to. And you're to be commended. The increased healthcare capacity and the alternative care sites you've set up have been great. Healthcare screening by different entities and businesses as people are going to work to make sure that we can stop this when it comes up is all great. But you all are very, very close to the situation and probably so close to it. That I'm afraid you might be losing a little touch of what's going on out in the public and what the public is thinking. And this gets me circling back to the Cottonwood Rodeo. I suspect that if you had lightened up or the state had lightened up on the closures of schools. The closures of businesses, the closures of a lot of government, a government, a lot of government services. If you had focused more on the hygiene, the sanitation, the face coverings, the social distancing, the track and trace. And having people do the responsible thing. I suspect that if, for one, I don't think people would be as blatantly irritated and mad to the point where. They're going out in public and you mentioned people that aren't wearing face coverings. I suspect that if we weren't so locked down right now, because what it's looking like now is a power grab. It's, it's gotten from the first couple of weeks when we didn't know what was going to happen, we get it. Another week, okay, we get that. Four weeks, okay, we get that. But once we got beyond that, I understand what you're doing is in the best interest of the public. But you have to understand at some point, you have to be pragmatic about your response. And say, if we focus on what we know can stop this virus or slow it down to where it's tolerable. And let people, people go back to living their lives, especially the kids in the schools and all sports, I guess, is now canceled too. That's why people are mad. That is going to force people to, even if it's cutting off their nose despite their face, to go out in public without face coverings. To not wash their hands, to ignore it all, just to prove to the world that, that they're not going to participate in it. I think they're protesting more the lockdown than they are all the measures to slow this virus down. And then if, if I can end, and it's really with the question is what is the goal? What's the ultimate timeline of this? Because what you've got going on right now is that the rate of infection that you have, where we're at right now. If you just take a look at the county of Humboldt, this virus will be circulating literally beyond the lifespan of anybody on the phone right now. And probably, quite frankly, the lifespan of any of our children. What's the ultimate goal? What's the horizon on this whole program?
Thank you very much, Kevin. Well, we'll be taking a public comment and then we'll try to address any of the issues that were brought up on this. Are there any further comments from the public on this item?
Sheriff Dano, I don't see any more hands raised. And I would just remind people again, subpost star nine on their keypad if they would like to comment.
And we'll just take a brief pause here. Are you seeing anything?
Sheriff Dano, I am not, so that would conclude.
Yeah, we're going to conclude public comment and take it back to the board and to Dr. Frankovich and the Sheriff. So I heard a number of issues brought up and I'd love it if you could respond to some of them. Maybe starting with the last one and going back if you like. Where, what, it's, it's a big question and it's probably being asked at the White House as well as here. So what is the ultimate goal?
Yeah, and I, I, I mean, it's, it's a fair question. And I think we've been, you know, as we learn more about this virus, we haven't been dealing with it very long. Remember, we started, we, we've been in this about what, three to four months really in terms of on the ground. So I think that what the caller's alluding to is that, yes, we are in this for the long haul. Coronavirus, we don't know what will happen many years from now with this virus. But we do know that it's going to take some time to establish herd immunity. Meaning that when we get a large percent of the population who ultimately has been infected. That we will see, you know, just diminished spread essentially. It makes it harder for the virus to transmit. That's why we vaccinate. If we can get a high percentage of the population immune, we don't get much spread when a virus surfaces. So until we have significant herd immunity, we are going to see this circulating. And our goal, until that happens, is to just be able to manage the pace of new infections. So that when people need medical care, they're able to access it because that's going to help save lives. And so it's, it's not perfect. I wish we had a vaccine immediately. When we have a vaccine, that will help us basically get that equivalent of herd immunity, right? People won't have to get the infection and able to be, in order to be immune, we can vaccinate. But right now, we don't know when that vaccine will come. So I'm assuming we're going to be dealing with this for at least until we have a, a good vaccine. It may be a year, it may be closer to two. I really don't know. Our goal is to get as closely back to our normal lives as possible while we're waiting for that to happen. And then again, in the meantime, to just manage the number of cases coming on so that we can respond and provide the care needed.
Thank you, Doctor. Supervisor Bone.
So, Dr. Frankovich, the numbers keep flashing out. And I know we were at zero for quite a while and three for thirty days or thirty, whatever and everything else. And now we've had eight or nine in the last four. If we get three or four in the next two days, do we step back and do nothing? Is that, is that what you're saying? We, we've lost that one and, and then we go back to square one? Because we were, we were at square one for quite a while and now we, we're letting it catch up with us. And I think the question we always talk about, it's going to happen soon. It's going to, you know, we're going to get there. And I think what people are looking for is definitive dates. And I know it's really hard to come up with definitive dates, but maybe soon is not an answer. And I think that's where another frustration part is. I think as the last caller said, where are we at? Because we know this thing isn't going away. That's what we keep hearing. And so are we going to, if we get lucky and don't have any for a couple more days and we're going to do a soft opening and the restaurants are going to be six feet apart and we're asking, you're going to let somebody walk inside and buy a shirt? And then if we have ten and two weeks or something like that, are we just going to tell everybody, go back to ground zero and stop? And then is it going to be a stop and go till we get this? I mean, I think people are, I think people are looking to more definitive answers. And, and I think the frustration is that they're not getting definitive answers. And if we don't have them, I think they want to hear we don't have definitive answers. Does that make sense?
Yes, we don't have definitive answers. We don't. And that's, you know, that's the problem is we don't know. What I can tell you is that we, the, the end game here is when we either have enough immunity that we don't see a lot circulating or we have good preventative treatment or good treatment if you're ill, or we have vaccine. That's the end game. What we do in between is we try, you're right, the goal is not to have zero transmission. We, we need to have some cases, we're going to have some cases. And new cases does not necessarily mean that we have to go back into shelter in place. If we manage it right, the goal is to be able to retain what we've been doing, but maybe pause before doing more. To allow us to sort of let things play out a bit before we take the next step again. So our goal in this is not to have to step back into shelter in place. But if we get wildly under, out of control transmission very quickly, that's a possibility. That's what we're trying to avoid with this gradual emergence from shelter.
What, what is, what is, and just out of curiosity, because you bring it up, what is wildly out of control? What is, what, what kind of number is wildly out of control? Because it's just, people want to know if we're getting close, it's, you know.
Yes. So what I will tell you is, and we'll be communicating this as we go. But in this framework that we just put out, we talk about what are the things that would trigger us to pause? What are the things that would cause concern? So it's a significant increase in cases over three consecutive days, a doubling time of cases of less than five days. More than three unlinked chains of transmission in the fourth day period. We're going to be reporting on those internally. We're going to be talking about those indicators constantly about what we're seeing on the ground. And those are the kinds of things that are going to inform. I can't tell you Supervisor Bone what number that is because it's going to depend on what number we start with that day. But what I can tell you is we'll be looking at all of these indicators that are laid out to tell us whether we're at an appropriate place to take the next step moving forward and then the next step. And hopefully never have to go back into shelter in place like we are right now.
Thank you.
Sheriff, did you want to say something on that? And I know that Supervisor Bass wants to say something as well.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we understand that people are going to get sick and, you know, we're obviously most concerned about, you know, that doubling rate. We're tracking hospitalizations and also ultimately deaths associated with this. And so as we go on, we know that those numbers will likely be going up. So those are things that Public Health is tracking and, and, and so we're, we're working on that. One of the other questions from, from one of the callers was, you know, what about cannabis farms? Can cannabis farms register? Absolutely. Right now, they're a part of one of those seventeen sectors, agriculture. So if you're a permitted farm and you can apply for this certification through the agricultural sector. And, and you will be able to go through all those prompts and provide a, a specific plan that addresses all those things. And you'll be able to be in compliance with our, with our county and state law. So, and also the trimmigrants, we will follow up on that as far as those people that are congregating in Southern Humboldt.
Yeah, and I, again, that will be going live pretty much soon after we have this meeting, right Sheriff?
That's correct. That's, that's our goal. I'm just, I'm keep checking the website. It's not up yet, but, but I will continue to check it.
And, and there was a question also, Dr. Frankovich, about the quarantine. Couldn't quite get everything, but it was something along the lines of, are we forcibly quarantining people? I mean, can you, I think maybe just a little clarity on what quarantine means versus isolation. You know, you get somebody sick, they're isolated if they contacted, et cetera.
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. So isolation is individuals who are ill and being tested or are confirmed cases are isolated. And we're in contact with them all the time. People who are in quarantine, those are individuals who have been exposed to a case but are not symptomatic. And so those individuals, the term is quarantine. In practicality, they look very much the same. It basically means that you are home, you are not out and about. If you are a homeless person in that situation, you are, and we're helping to provide shelter for you for that time period. If you're in quarantine, you are in quarantine for fourteen days from the last time that you had contact with that case. And when we, we are again in contact with all of those individuals as well. And we release them from quarantine when they meet that fourteen day mark and do not have symptoms. For people who are in isolation because they're a confirmed case, we're in essentially daily contact with those individuals. And we are monitoring their symptoms with them. and we are monitoring their symptoms with them and we are following that. And then we use, um, those indicators we've talked about, um, three days without fever, without use of fever medicines, um, improvement in symptoms. And the new recommendation is ten days out from the onset. When people meet those marks, we release them from isolation at that time. And so, uh, we are not locking people up, um, per se. Um, uh, we have had actually, um, very good cooperation from people on this. And as I said, our measure is constant contact. If we have someone who is flagrantly, um, violating, um, their isolation or quarantine orders, um, then we deal with that. Um, and if it is necessary, we can involve law enforcement as well, um, because we have that authority. But we've been very fortunate that most people have been pretty respectful about the process.
Um, Director Stevens.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add that it's a little technical thing, but they're actually given a hard copy of the actual order that is signed by the health officer. It's delivered to them. Um, that, that is the document that legally puts them in an order by the health, uh, a quarantine or an isolation order by the health officer. So they get it in writing. They know exactly what, what it is in writing. So it's not just, they can get the verbal and then it's followed up by a written document that is the isolation order or quarantine order. So it's a very formal process.
Right. And then they get a second document that tells them they're released when that happens.
So, you know, reflecting on it, um, we put this meeting together because we had prepared everything so that we could go for a variance with the governor. The process with that now is we send this in with the Board of Supervisors letter, which I'm pretty sure we're going to vote on pretty soon. And then, um, the process at that point is then that we are okay for the variance once we see our county on the state website, correct?
Correct. Um, and so they, and actually, again, um, I've already, uh, been in contact with the state folks and gone over our plan. Um, and so they, they kind of understand what's in there, um, the, at least the, the first line of those folks. So as well as our updated numbers, um, in addition to the report. So it goes to, um, we'll submit the letter of support now with all of our documents. And if the board approves that, and then as soon as they review it, it will be posted on their website. When it's posted, we have been granted the, essentially the variance. Um, and, uh, and then we can move forward at our local discretion on how we want to do this.
Thank you, Supervisor Bone.
Okay, and once that gets posted, that doesn't change anything because we're nowhere near granting any variances to anybody, right?
Well, we are, once it's posted, it allows us to, to certify businesses. It allows us to say, what, what are we doing next? And who's going to open? And we'll be able to then approve the entities that have a plan in place that fit that criteria. So again, it might be that we're able to say, conditions on the ground look good, that retail in general, um, those entities that have a solid plan can go ahead and open. Um, it could be that if we're concerned about what our numbers look like, um, that we may say we're going to do X number or there may be some modification.
X, X number.
I just mean that rather than six thousand businesses opening at once or as they have their thing, maybe we're going to graduate them in a little bit. If we're concerned about what it looks like on the ground with our transmission and cases. So I'd say there's a span there of whether we, taken us, uh, more gradual approach to say that first tier of opening retail businesses to put traffic or whether we're able to do that all sort of as one. Um, but I, again, people can be putting in their business plans so that they're, um, basically have been reviewed and okayed. And then they'll be able to just have the flag from us to say, we're in that moment where we're opening. Go ahead. Your good is gold.
And that, what's the timeframe on that? I mean, just, I mean, Friday, if they get the plan into you by tomorrow afternoon, Thursday, Friday?
Uh, what I would tell you is it's going to, again, because in the last forty-eight, seventy-two hours, we've had a real change in our cases. We're going to be looking when we get that approval at what our numbers look like, what these parameters we just went over look like and whether we're ready to do a full, you know, all retail kind of go or whether it's going to have to look a little more gradual as we first start. So I would tell you, I don't know when the approval is going to be posted, but we'll be reading those things continuously then and going forward from that time.
For the sake of argument, for the sake of argument, if we get ten more cases, are we just going to put the brakes on then? In two days?
If we get ten cases in the next day, then I would say, yes, we are probably going to be holding for a moment. So.
Yeah, I think that the, the thing is that, um, when things were going along and we didn't have a whole bunch of new cases, uh, it was our understanding that we got this in, the governor signed it off, put it up on the website and we were good to go. Now we have this late breaking thing. It's the governor's going to make the decision as to whether or not it's going to go on their website. Once they've said, yeah, it's okay, it looks as if you guys still have it. Because remember, the requirements on this attestation are, how do you handle if you have this many or that many? Are your hospitals ready to handle it or not? And I think the judgment can be made that our hospitals are ready to handle, um, a fairly significant occurrence. But again, we're going to have to see and the doctor's going to have to make the determination if we get a, a significant number. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes, essentially. I mean, I, again, it's the whole point of having this framework in place, which is how do we measure when we're at a point where it's safe to move forward? And how do we know when it's a good time to pause? So I think it's important that we get this, yeah, I want to have this approval in place to, to use our local numbers to inform the process. But it's not possible, um, in the position, if we'd had the seven or ten days of negatives of, of zero cases, I'd feel quite differently about what our approach was going to be in the next forty-eight hours compared to where we're sitting right now. So, um, you know, we aren't, we don't choose the numbers that we have. Um, we just have to look at the numbers that we have and make the best choices that we can. My hope is, is that we're going to be able to move forward and do so, you know, or, or, you know, get, get businesses up and open as soon as possible. Um, but it's, it really is going to be dependent on how things are looking over the next day or two.
Yeah, okay. Um, a- any further discussion? Um, at that stage, at this stage, we have just one task today and that is to, to, uh, follow hopefully the recommendation here on the process. So I would entertain a motion or I will myself make a motion, uh, to, um, authorize myself, uh, to sign a letter of support for the attestation. Um, but if somebody else wants to make that motion, I'd be happy to make that happen.
I'll make that motion.
Supervisor Bone?
Save you from yourself.
I mean Supervisor Bass. Yeah, okay, I'll second it. So, uh, oh Supervisor Madron, I see, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
I, I can hear you Supervisor Madron, yes.
I'm here by phone, thanks to the magic of Ryan Sharp.
Okay, did you have a question or, or anything? Because you, you were not.
Nope.
Part of the last, okay, great.
I'm all good. I heard that the, uh, the health officer is guaranteeing that, uh, she's going to do everything in her power to help us open up as safely as we can and pull back if we need to. And there's no guarantee on how that works because the numbers are what they are. So science and facts, I appreciate that. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you, uh, Council Billingsley.
Uh, Sheriff, there were two recommended actions. I don't know if they're both necessary, but in addition to the authorizing you to sign the letter, there was also the accept the attestation of readiness. So perhaps that could be added to the motion. So it's staff recommendations two and three.
Absolutely.
That was my general understanding.
Yeah, I, I rolled that in with receiving the report, but you're absolutely correct. Thank you, uh, Council Billingsley. So again, uh, basically the motion is to, um, approve staff recommendation. So Ryan, can you, uh, take a roll call, please?
Thank, thank you, Sheriff Fennel. Yes, that's my understanding too, is the motion is to approve staff recommendations and I'll start with the roll call vote. Supervisor Bass?
Yes.
Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
Fennel?
Yes.
Passes four oh with Supervisor Wilson absent.
Thank you very much, um, everybody. Uh, I know that, um, people have been very anxious for us to reach this point and, um, thank you for all of your efforts. And with that, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.